Glennon.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
No, Glennon.
For now, I don't want to hold you up. You have slightly different words on it. One word.
We don't want to tell passions, yeah.
It's seven o'clock. We're going to go ahead and wait just one more minute for the administrator to get back in here real quick before we start. All right, guys. It's 7:01 PM. I'm going to call the Spring Hill City Council regular meeting of January 27, 2022 to order. We don't have a pastor available this evening, so Diana, would you be able to do the invocation? You guys could please stand if you're able.
Lord Jesus, be the light that guides us. Be the light that shines out from within us. May our lives be a reflection of your light and love to those who walk in darkness. Help us choose light over darkness. Peace over conflict. Love over hatred. Joy over sadness and compassion over judgment. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Steve Owen did let us know that he is unable to attend tonight's meeting. And with that, Madam Clerk, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Roth.
Here.
Mr. Owen. Mr. Peel.
Here.
Mayor, we do not have a quorum present of the city council.
Okay. I want to thank you all for being here tonight. I want to say a couple things before we move on. Our nation was founded on free speech, but it was also founded on law and order. We want to hear from the citizens that have something to say, and we have the citizen participation on the agenda for that reason. Before that time, and once that citizen participation period has ended, I would like to ask that the audience remains quiet and respectful to allow the governing body to conduct business, which is what we were elected to do. We cannot conduct business or have a productive meeting with constant interruptions and outbursts. We, along with the city staff, will be working on re-implementing a meeting protocol policy soon. Those details will be made available at that time. Thank you, guys, and with that, we'll move on. Next, we have a presentation and report from the city attorney.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Councilmember Roth, Councilmember Appeal, and members of the public. For the record, before the clerk, please note, at this time, we are not in a meeting of the governing body of the city of Spring Hill. My report and any action which may follow my report is being conducted separately from that pursuant to this body standing right here, which is two bodies, actually. One, the mayor, and two, the remaining council members. Remaining council members is an important term. I don't think your microphone's on.
Better?
Yep.
I apologize. The remaining, we were able to catch what I needed. Would you like me to repeat it? Okay. Pursuant to the direction of Mayor Burkey, who as mayor is authorized directly to require any officer, city officer, to provide a report and account. I was directed to conduct research and provide a report with regard to the appointment of council members to the vacancies on the city council in Spring Hill, Kansas. We have conducted that research. First, to summarize, I will provide additional information, but to summarize. The Spring Hill Municipal Code, section, sections 1-102, D2, and D3, and section 1, 113B, and the charter ordinances upon which they were incorporated into the municipal code. Use the same language of KSA 15-201, which is cited in the municipal code as the basis for section 1-113B. I will try not to use too many numbers and citations. Pursuant to that, we have conducted legal research to make a determination of what the difference is in the use of the term. And for all of those ordinances, all the charter ordinances and the code provisions I just cited, state that when there's a vacancy on the council, the mayor appoints upon, in one case, they say, it says the advice and consent of the council, and on the other, it says on the consent of the council. Excuse me, of the remaining council members, on the advice and consent of the remaining council members. The mayor makes, the mayor of the city of Spring Hill makes, I'm going to guess, at least 100 appointments. I believe it's actually many more, but of those that are called for within the statutory structure and within the municipal code, every single other appointment made by the mayor, every position, every office, reads one of two ways. The mayor shall
Go ahead. Glenda. Hmm?
No, Glenda.
For now, I don't want to hold you up. Here. It has slightly different colors on it. One word.
We need to tell Pat Jones, yeah.
It's seven o'clock. We're gonna go ahead and wait just one more minute for the administrator to get back in here real quick before we start. All right, guys. It's 7:01 PM. I'm gonna call the Spring Hill City Council Regular Meeting of January 27, 2022 to order. We don't have a pastor available this evening, so Diana, would you be able to do the invocation?
Yep.
You guys could please stand if you're able.
Lord Jesus, be the light that guides us. Be the light that shines out from within us. May our lives be a reflection of your light and love to those who walk in darkness. Help us choose light over darkness. Peace over conflict. Love over hatred. Joy over sadness and compassion over judgment. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Steve Owen did let us know that he is unable to attend tonight's meeting. And with that, Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Mrs. Roth?
Here.
Mr. Owen. Mr. Peel?
Here.
Mayor, we do not have a quorum present of the city council.
Okay. I want to thank you all for being here tonight. I want to say a couple things before we move on. Our nation was founded on free speech, but it was also founded on law and order. We want to hear from the citizens that have something to say, and we have the citizen participation on the agenda for that reason. Before that time, and once that citizen participation period has ended, I would like to ask that the audience remains quiet and respectful to allow the governing body to conduct business, which is what we were elected to do. We cannot conduct business or have a productive meeting with constant interruptions and outbursts. We, along with the city staff, will be working on re-implementing a meeting protocol policy soon. Those details will be made available at that time. Thank you, guys, and with that, we'll move on. Next, we have a presentation and report from the city attorney.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Councilmember Roth, Councilmember Peel, and members of the public. For the record, before the clerk, please note, at this time, we are not in a meeting of the governing body of the city of Spring Hill. My report and any action which may follow my report is being conducted separately from that pursuant to this body standing right here, which is two bodies, actually. One, the mayor, and two, the remaining council members. Remaining council members is an important term. I don't think your microphone's on.
Better?
Yep.
I apologize. The remaining, we were able to catch what I needed. Would you like me to repeat it? Okay. Pursuant to the direction of Mayor Burkey, who as mayor is authorized directly to require any officer, city officer, to provide a report and account. I was directed to conduct research and provide a report with regard to the appointment of council members to the vacancies on the city council in Spring Hill, Kansas. We have conducted that research. First to summarize, I will provide additional information, but to summarize, the Spring Hill Municipal Code section, sections 1-102, D2, and D3, and section 1, 113B, and the charter ordinances upon which they were incorporated into the municipal code, use the same language of KSA 15-201, which is cited in the municipal code as the basis for section 1-113B. I will try not to use too many numbers and citations. Pursuant to that, we have conducted legal research to make a determination of what the difference is in the use of the term, and for all of those ordinances, all the charter ordinances and the code provisions I just cited, state that when there's a vacancy on the council, the mayor appoints upon, in one case, they say, it says, "the advice and consent" of the council, and on the other, it says, "on the consent of the council," excuse me, "of the remaining council members," on the advice and consent of the remaining council members. The mayor makes, the mayor of the city of Spring Hill makes, I'm going to guess, at least 100 appointments. I believe it's actually many more. But of those that are called for within the statutory structure and within the municipal code, every single other appointment made by the mayor, every position, every office, reads one of two ways. The mayor shall appoint, and the governing body shall consent, or upon the consent of the governing body, or upon the consent of the city council. Given the definition of the city council and mayor sitting together as the governing body of the city of Spring Hill, they have the same meaning. Now, when there is different language, we're supposed to provide import to that. We conducted research to determine, this is unusual. Under the Kansas statutes, particularly KSA 15-201, there's only one other statute, 12104A, which the city charted out of, the city charted out a part of KSA 15-201 a long time ago. Those are the only two places that use the term "upon the consent of the remaining council members." This is incredibly important to, because of the use of these words. When courts construe statutes and legislative action, which includes action by a governing body and a charter ordinance, or the legislature of the state of Kansas, they interpret that language by the plain and ordinary meaning, in light of using different words, and when the legislature uses different words, the court specifically has instructed, and when I say the court, excuse me, the Kansas Supreme Court, has specifically instructed that you must give specific import to those words, and that the legislature gave the, directed, used those words for the purpose of making them different. All right. So when we look at Spring Hill Municipal Code, where it says, "In the case of a vacancy occurring by reason of resignation, death, or removal from office from the city, the mayor, by and with the advice and consent of the remaining council members, shall appoint some qualified electorate to fill that vacancy." The body that approves that, under Kansas law, is there is, is technically the remaining council members. This was first addressed in a Supreme Court case in Kansas in 1937, Tucker v. Rainey, in which the court held specifically that, and let me get this, I wish to get this correct, the court specifically stated that this, what the statute means, and they were referring to KSA 15-201. Now, I will note one thing that's really important for 15-201. The middle paragraph of that statute is exactly the, uses exactly the same words as Spring Hill Municipal Code 1-113B, and that's important. That's where the city got it. Now, what the court said is, the statute means that the remaining councilmen constitute the body which is authorized to approve and consent to the appointment made by the mayor, not the governing body, not the city council. So when I spoke earlier to say, this report, which I've been directed to give under the authority of the mayor as a city officer, we're not in a city council meeting at this time. We're in a meeting of the remaining members, which is the body, and the mayor, who separately makes an appointment. This issue was readdressed. Pardon me, sir. This matter was addressed again in 1984 by the Attorney General of the state of Kansas. In that, in that matter, the Attorney General addressed a city in which three, which had lost three council members in vacancies, I believe, although I'm not certain the three were indicted or under investigation and resigned. In any case, at that time, a quorum of a five-member city council was four persons. So they were well short of what would be a governing body. The Kansas Attorney General, turning to the principles dictated and unquestioned in any Kansas law since the Supreme Court's decision in Tucker, specifically stated that the quorum is a quorum of the remaining council members. Thus, the body which may appoint to fill a vacancy on the council or to approve the appointment of the mayor is the majority of the remaining council members. There are three remaining council members. Steve Owen, Diana Roth, and Brian Peel. A quorum of that body is two. Thus, we have a meeting right now that we are beginning, or we're in, upon the mayor's choice to point of a, the body specified by the statute and by the city's charter ordinances, the remaining council members, two of three of whom make up a quorum. I would note quickly for background, a lot of the, of the action which determined the manner in which the city appointed vacancies, elected offices, whether they divided into wards, et cetera, occurred when the city of Spring Hill moved from a city of the third class to a city of the second class. When you move from a city of the third class to the second class, or second class to the first class, by the size of your population, it is quite normal for the cities to enact a number of charter ordinances, which are then submitted to the Attorney General. In short, in 2009, I believe, it was either 2009 or 2012, I think it was 2009, if I recall correctly, the Spring Hill City Council adopted a number of charter ordinances, reaffirming their prior charters, and adopting, rejecting the language of Chapter 14 for the city of, for cities of second class, and instead relying on the language of Chapter 15, which it had used previously. Thus, the reference to 15-201. In summary, under Spring Hill Municipal Code, Spring Hill Charter Ordinances, and the laws of the state of Kansas, including the once, the one published case, one case I can find of any kind, addressing this issue, and the one Attorney General opinion on the issue, the mayor may appoint, and the remaining council members, which is a body of three, a quorum of which is two, may approve that appointment. That is my opinion. That is my report, as requested, and that is my interpretation of both Kansas laws, Spring Hill Municipal Code, and the charter ordinances. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. I have given Councilman Steve Owen every opportunity since the last regularly scheduled council meeting two weeks ago to respond to my phone call and email, and those attempts of direct communication have been unsuccessful. We have to move forward as a governing body and as a community. We cannot continue to have all city business held hostage by the refusal of a council member to show up or communicate directly with me or the governing body. I have chosen not to take legal action against Councilman Owen for the willful neglect of his duties and his oath of office. I will not waste the city's resources and therefore its taxpayers, taxpayers, thousands of additional dollars in legal expenses. I made every effort to include Councilman Owen in the appointment process. I directed the city attorney to stay the appointment process until our regular meeting tonight. I am unwilling to delay the conduct of the people's business any longer. We cannot continue to have multiple meetings with no resolution or end in sight. This disrespects our staff and their families, our city residents, and those who require action from the governing body or conduct business with the city. We will move forward with the appointment of the city council vacancies as specified under Kansas law and Spring Hill Charter Ordinance. We, the governing body for Spring Hill, will perform the duties for which we were elected. We will, along with the city staff, work to effectively and efficiently serve the public. With shared values coupled with mutual respect for our differences, we will bring this community together and forge a prosperous future. I was able to interview all nine of the applicants for city council vacancies, and we had a very, actually, a very good group of applicants. Each one of them brought many things to the table. The person I am appointing today has a very strong career history in the finance and banking industry, and I think that that knowledge will be a huge asset to the governing body and to the citizens, especially as we are consistently dealing with budgets and numbers. He also has been active throughout our community in many ways. I would like to nominate Chad Young to fulfill the vacated seat by Tyler Graves. Madam Clerk, could you administer the oath of office, please?
We gotta, we gotta-
We need a motion-
Oh, sorry.
For your appointment.
Need a motion. Sorry, guys.
I make a motion to approve the appointment of Chad Young to the vacant city council seat, vacated by Tyler Graves.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries 200.
Thank you, and I just wanted to be clear. Reason I stepped up here, I did not, because the mayor doesn't get a tying vote in this, and the vote is of two remaining members. Mayor may only appoint, and may do nothing more than that. Excuse me for not including that in the initial report.
You're good. All right. Now, Madam Clerk, will you please administer the oath of office to Mr. Chad Young?
Mr. Young, do you want to come forward?
Aye, Chad.
Aye, Chad Young.
solemnly swear-
Solemnly swear.
that I will support-
That I will support.
the Constitution-
The Constitution.
of the United States.
Of the United States.
and the Constitution of the state of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the state of Kansas.
and faithfully discharge-
And faithfully discharge.
the duties of council member-
The duties of council member.
for the city of Spring Hill, Kansas.
For the city of Spring Hill, Kansas.
so help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Roth?
Here.
Mr. Owen? Mr. Peel?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mayor, we do have a quorum present.
All right. With that, we will move on to the approval, approval of the agenda. Does the council have any requested changes to the agenda?
Is it on your, is it on your screen?
It's on your desktop.
Shit. Can you get a- Sorry, guys. Bear with us.
Second.
I do not have any changes.
All right. I do not either.
All right, then we just need a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda?
Is this just the approval of agenda?
Yes, the agenda. Correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I moved to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
There you go. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries 300. At this time, we will move on to the citizen participation. We just asked that you would try to keep your comments to approximately three minutes, just to allow all those that want to discuss. And first on the list, we have Mr. Shane Johnson. And if you could just state your name and address when you get up here, that'd be great.
Sure. My name is Shane Johnson. I live at 19020 Skyview Lane. We're in Foxwood Ranch subdivision. So just a little background, my family moved here from Olathe a year and a half ago, and we lived in Olathe pretty much my entire adult life. We moved here for a specific reason. It was opportunity. It was smaller hometown feel. I wanted to get away from hearing sirens out my windows at night with the windows open. I wanted to get out in the country where I could see the stars. I did not move to Spring Hill to deal with petty politics. I think the city has plenty of problems that we need to deal with, and it's mostly a small city that is trying to mature. We've got growth problems. We need to increase our tax base. We need to increase where the monies are coming from to support our infrastructure, and it's not from the citizens. We are a bedroom community, and that's where all of our money comes from. It really needs to start coming from other places, other sources, and I really hope that a lot of the campaign promises that I saw, not that I necessarily voted for any of them, come true, right? I don't think there's any necessarily nefarious underlying conspiracy situation going on. I really hope that the council and the mayor really stick to what they say. Didn't vote for any of you, to be honest, but we're all vested in the success of the city, and I really hope you take to heart what the citizens have to say and not want to play politics and really move the city forward and evolve us so that we actually can be something to be proud of, right? We all want to say, "I'm from Spring Hill," and we want to be known for something, not because of seeing an article on Fox 4 saying, "What a joke this is because we have a city councilman who just doesn't show up, doesn't make comments," and others that are trying to execute on city business, which, believe it or not, there's lots of little things in city business that mean a lot to a lot of people. My son's here. He's in scouts. He's observing this. He is one of the future leaders of this community. And really, small things are in this agenda that matter. One of the examples that, you know, as little as it is, approving the expense for dog food is part of the agenda. This is really basic stuff that we got to get through, and playing politics doesn't help anyone. So I support the city council, Mr. Mayor, and I really hope you stick to what you say you're gonna. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next, we have Andrew Saunders, I believe.
So I'm at, Andrew Saunders, I'm at 20011 South Crestone Street, right up the street. Congratulations on your appointment. Congratulations on your-
Thanks, sir.
Absolutely. So I also agree with the gentleman. I do think we need to raise taxes. The reason why is because we're growing so fast. Thank you for not raising taxes this year, and thank you for the road. I extremely appreciate that, because it was horrible. I've never been here up until tonight, and I also saw it on Fox News. It is unfortunate what happened. I do not envy any of y'all at all, because y'all work way too hard for not enough pay. Thank you for everything that y'all do. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next, we have Mr. Steve Boswell.
Hi, Steve Boswell, 504 Jackson. I'm not familiar with the new city council member yet. I still have a lot of questions about the legalities of the matter. I still have a lot of questions about the legalities of the matter. Now, whether they'll be answered or not, that's another story, I mean, it shows in our subsection, or in our charter ordinance, section thirty-six, uh, seven states that the vacancy of mayor, uh, the city, uh, or the council president would be elected to mayor, and that would be you, Mr. Burkey. Uh, or you would be appointed into the position of mayor, which you were. But it also states that you will have all of the abilities and powers of the mayor, except for one, which would be appointments. And I don't understand it, I don't know, uh, how it's able, or how it is that you're able to make an appointment, as you were not the elected mayor. Um, but I would look forward to getting that explained to me in detail, and, uh, I would appreciate it. And hopefully, we can move forward on business, but I think that was a large majority of Mr. Owen's concern as well, was following our own rules and laws, thank you.
Thanks, sir. That's all that we had that signed up, is there anyone else that would like to make a comment or speak publicly? And if so, you can just come up and state your name and your address and- This time, if there's no one else, we'll go ahead and close the citizen participation period. Next, we will move on to con- consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda?
Second?
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Not, those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries three zero zero. Uh, Ms. Charity, would you like to, um, give the- Sorry, guys. Alright, next, we'll move on to formal council actions. First item on the agenda is to consider transfer of expenses for purchase of a twenty twenty-one Police Department vehicles to the City Equipment Reserve Fund effective December twenty twenty-one. Ms. Armstrong, would you give a report on that, please?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, it's good to be up here. The item that I have before you is to consider a transfer of expenses to the Capital Replacement Equipment Fund. The background on this is at the November twelfth, twenty twenty, and that would be a year ago, a year ago November council meeting, council authorized the purchase of two marked police patrol units, and approved a resolution authorizing reimbursement of the purchase through a lease purchase agreement. These vehicle purchases were authorized as part of our twenty twenty-one budget, and were to be financed with a lease purchase financing agreement. And just to be clear, a lease purchase is not a lease, it is a purchase, the city does own them, and this is a method of paying those back. Uh, the total paid during twenty twenty-one for both of those vehicles and upfending expense is ninety thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-six cents. So, we are not asking for the purchase, they have been purchased, purchased. They were initially purchased, and we were intending to do a lease, or to do a financing arrangement, but during our budget discussions in twenty twenty-two, it was suggested to hold off on bank financing, and if possible, make the purchase as a cash transaction. The Equipment Reserve Fund has an adequate cash balance to absorb these expenses and avoid a loan. As such, it is recommended to transfer the expenses to the Capital Replacement Equipment Reserve Fund. Moving forward, we will bring an option or a proposal to the council to make payments into the Capital Replacement Equipment Fund in lieu of our loan payments, and our expectation would be to build that fund so that as we need to purchase new vehicles, we would have adequate cash reserves in that fund for those. There is no budgetary impact on this transaction, we currently, uh, just to explain how this works, when we are going to do this financing arrangement, the purchases are approved, we make the approved purchases, and they go into a specific fund and project. And that fund will go negative because there's not any money in it. Once all those purchases are made, we would take out a loan for the balance of what's in there, and then when we get the loan and get those funds, we deposit them in there, so it clears the zero balance. So what we're looking at doing is transferring this negative balance into our Equipment Reserve Fund and pay for them out of that fund. The alternatives would be to approve the transfer of expenses totaling ninety thousand eight sixty-one thirty-six from the lease fund to the Capital Replacement Equipment Fund, deny the transfer, and direct staff to consider alternate payment sources, or to table the issue for further research. And with that, staff does recommend authorization of a transfer of expenses totaling ninety thousand eight sixty-one thirty-six dated twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one, from the leases fund to the Capital Replacement Equipment Fund. And with that, if anyone has any questions, I'm glad to answer them.
Just real quick, the, so the, the fund that we did the original out of is already in the negative, and we wiped that to zero, and then the cash comes out of another fund and pays it off, and that's how, how it all, I guess, accounting-wise or budgetary-wise, and line item, how it balances out.
That's-
Am I reading that correctly?
That's correct, yes.
And did you say this was the, in the original twenty twenty-one budget?
Yes, this is a twenty twenty-one purchase. Yes, and we will have no loan.
Yeah, it's loan-free.
It's loan-free, that's correct, yes.
To save all that interest.
Yes. Okay, so if, um, if staff would agree, and they would like to make a motion to recommend authorization of the transfer of expenses totaling ninety eight sixty-one dated twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one, from the leases fund to the Capital Replacement Equipment Fund.
So moved?
I think you guys have to do that, I think.
I didn't get the, I didn't get the figures down.
I didn't write it down.
Ninety-eight.
Uh, ninety-eight sixty-one thirty-six.
Was there any change? Oh.
Thirty-six.
I missed one, ninety-eight sixty-one thirty-six. Thank you. I move we approve the transfer of funds in the amount of ninety thousand eight sixty-one and thirty-six cents, as recommended by Ms. Armstrong.
Second?
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Not, those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries three zero zero. Next item on the agenda is the Consider of Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-two dash R dash zero one, Designating Emergency Snow Routes for the City of Spring Hill. Mr. Messer, would you give the report on that one, please, he's already ready.
Thank you. Every year, we do a resolution for the snow routes, and what we did this year was take all the existing ones from last year, and then we scoured the new roads that have come into use or houses have been built on, and we added those in that, uh, listing that you have, I mean, there's probably ten or fifteen, I don't want to read them all unless you need me to, and we did a map and a, and, um, every year, we adopt a snow route plan. So, that is what I submitted, and, uh, the alternatives is to approve the resolution, uh, deny it, or return it to the staff for consideration. Our recommendation is approve the new Twenty Twenty-two Emergency Snow Route, um, resolution.
Is there any questions?
Uh, quick question, so the, did you say the, the arterials?
Are the same, no changes in-
Right, but do we do all of that? Or is, uh, we're responsible for all of the arterials and the local ones?
Yes.
Okay, so we, that's-
We actually have two levels, we have the emergency, the ones that we do first, and then the second phase is the other ones.
Yeah. What I, that's, it's a lot.
Yes.
It's a whole lot.
We have, um, uh, over a hundred lane miles that we deal with, about a hundred and twelve, if I remember right.
How many trucks do we have that are doing, doing that?
On a given, on a good day, we have seven out there, on a fair day, we have five or six. Uh, right now, we're back up because we've had a little bit of break in the weather, we've got them all back and working up-
How many people with your seven trucks?
We try to do s- seven people on a shift, and we try to do two, we borrow and steal, we've got a couple people from planning and zoning. We've got, Pat comes out and, and does some of the cleanup. I'm gonna be in a snowplow this time, probably.
Shouldn't let him drive, probably.
Pardon?
Probably shouldn't let him drive.
Yeah, we took the truck away and gave him a skidster. No, uh, we appreciate the help, and we, um, we struggle to keep two seven-man crews, we got a night shift and a day shift. And, um, we got a new street super- supervisor, and he's done a lot to help organize and help, uh, train and get people going.
Yep, and I think you've done a lot to help organize everything too, so we appreciate that as well.
Okay, well, thank you.
I think it's worth mentioning, don't we also collaborate with the school a little bit on some of, uh, like-
We do several areas, and like the fire department, we hit their parking lots, we, we do a, a lot of the, um-
But don't they collaborate with us, because they, uh, it's my understanding, don't they, obviously, they're responsible for their properties, but then i- if they get finished and-
Yes.
Still have salt, maybe they'll come out and help, you know, get what our guys maybe haven't got to yet.
We help out, and they, even with the county, uh-
Just a good partnership.
Yes, they don't run through the town with their plows up.
Sure.
I mean, like, Miami County will run two twenty-third, they'll drop their plows. Johnson County will run one eighty-three, and we do the same when we help out on woodland. Uh, so, it's a collaborative effort from a lot of people.
Good.
In fact, the map, uh, I can't say enough about Johnson County Ames Department helped us create the map. So, we're getting a lot of cooperation from the counties, and, um, and a lot of entities to do this.
That's great. Any other questions?
Uh, what's the number of the resolution again?
Uh, Twenty Twenty-two dash R dash zero one.
Zero one. Uh, I make a motion to approve, uh, Resolution Twenty Twenty-two dash R dash zero one, Designating Emergency Snow Routes for the City of Spring Hill.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, additional discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries three zero, zero. With that, we'll move on to announcements and reports. Um, I don't have any current announcements right now, Mrs. Roth?
Uh, just excited that, um, we get to be here, welcome, and congrats. And thank you all for being here and allowing us to carry on with business.
Uh, Mr. Peel?
Uh, Jackie, I had a couple quick questions, just real small things. Um, on the rubber mulch grant, um, that was on the consent agenda, are we still, we still in the wheelhouse for that?
In other words, were, were we able to get an extension or anything on that?
Uh, no, uh, we just kind of, it was under the appropriation amount, we went ahead and submitted it because we were, we were gonna lose the opportunity, and I always felt that we could, uh, back out of it if we had to, but, we don't even know what we're gonna get, but we went ahead and-
But we're still gonna get mulch?
Yes.
Alright, okay, that was, that was my primary on that, and then the second one was on number sixteen there, um, with the fisheries thing, um, do we get or do any kind of stocking with that, with, with fish coming into the, to the-
They handle all that.
Okay, but stocking is part of, of what comes along with that?
Yes.
Awesome.
And the mulch, for those that aren't aware, the mulch was a ten thousand dollar grant, um, that we were looking to get.
It's two, two sections, and if we get all of them, it'll be ten, oh, just under ten thousand. If we get one, it'll be five, four, it, we're just hoping for both of them, though.
Yep. Alright, Mr. Young, you have your reports.
I don't have anything for tonight.
Alright.
No pressure.
Mr. Burton?
Welcome, Mr. Young, uh, no, I just want to make clear, on the mulch grants, it was under my authority, uh, spending authority, so we just went ahead and signed it, I did, legally. So I just want to make sure that everyone knows, it is still under my spending board. I usually typically don't do that, I bring everything, uh, finance, uh, Ms. Armstrong, myself bring everything to the council, but in this case, we didn't want to lose the grant. Other than that, I really don't have anything else, thank you.
Madam Clerk?
No report, thank you.
Ms. Armstrong?
No report, but welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Messer, do you have anything further? Chief Henson?
Uh, well, good news is, is the Spring Hill Police Department is fully staffed.
Woo-hoo! Alright, thank you. Mr. Dunley? Although I'm afraid to give you the-
No report.
Alright. Alright, with that, we will move on to executive session, attorney-client privilege. Um, the subject of that is Consider waiver of attorney-client privilege in light of potential litigation pursuant to the attorney-client privilege exception of KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B two of the Kansas Open Meeting Act. And then, um, how long do you think we need in that one?
I'd say ten minutes.
Ten minutes?
And, uh, we're gonna just put potential action to stop.
Okay.
I move we recess into executive session for ten minutes to receive advice of the council to consider waiver of attorney-client privilege in light of potential litigation pursuant to the attorney-client privilege exception, KSA seventy-five four three one nine B two of the Kansas Open Meeting Act. You will resume-
Good job.
Wow.
In the chambers at seven fifty-four?
And Councilor Roth, uh, you need to add, I believe, to the bottom of that?
Persons to be in attendance are the following, Pat Burton, Chuck Dunley, interim city administrator, and city attorney. Oh, I'm sorry. And the, uh, governing body.
Thank you. I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries three zero zero. See, I think we're what, about eight oh three now? Probably closer to eight oh four.
Eight three.
That's right, we'll go three. All right, let the record reflect that the governing body reconvened into open meeting at eight oh three PM. No votes were taken or decisions made during the executive session. The discussion was limited to the subjects stated.
I move to approve Resolution Number R Twenty Twenty Two Dash O Two for the City of Spring Hill, Kansas, approving the execute, uh, execution and delivery of an agreement to release and assign the city's opioid claims to the Kansas Attorney General and certifying cost attribute to substance abuse and addiction mitigation in excess of five hundred dollars.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries three zero zero. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries three zero zero. I want to thank you all for coming out tonight, guys. We appreciate you guys being here and, uh, look forward to seeing you next time. Have a great night.